Okay, then I'm going to call this meeting to order. Secretary, no members present?
All members present, please.
Dave, can you hear us? Dave, are you on the phone?
I'm here.
Okay, great. Okay, where's starting? Before we, the next item on the agenda is the citizens delegation. I would like to welcome you all here. I do want you to know that we deliberately set this meeting at a time when public would be able to attend versus in the morning. We do want your input. It is our meeting though, and you are our guests, so we do expect that the discussion, you know, your input is appropriate and informational and on topic tonight. We will be listening, there won't be any discussion because this is not a hearing, but it does give us the opportunity to hear everybody's voices before we do get into our discussion and then make our decisions. We also had quite a volume of emails, and I have to commend the community that they were all very informative and respectful. And again, to say that community input, parental input is very important. And not everybody's viewpoint, because of course, our, we got emails on both sides of the issue. And not everybody's wishes and desires and viewpoints are going to be honored. And ultimately, at the end of tonight, there are going to be people that are going to be happy and people that are going to be unhappy. But we as a board are going to do our best at making the decision with the information we have, with the information that we are going to hear from our superintendent tonight, with other facts that are presented. So after the public comment period, you are certainly welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I would hope that you would, you know, allow us to do our discussion without interruption. So with that, the other thing is, we do have a 20-minute policy for input. Let's see, how many people do we have? Okay, so 10 people have asked to, it looks like, asked to speak. So if everyone can try and just keep their comments somewhat limited to allow, so that everybody who has signed up is able to speak. If we go slightly over 20 minutes, I can certainly handle that, but we can't have this just going on forever for our meeting. So I will ask Shelley Schley to be the first person to talk.
Hello?
Hello.
I'd like to start off by saying that we do appreciate you guys having this meeting and keeping it that, with what you said before, that there are different sides of the story. So half would like masks, half would not. So with that being said, is there any reason why we wouldn't keep that as a parent's option? Because if a parent would like their child in a mask, they absolutely certainly can put them in one. With that being said, my daughter came home from the first couple of weeks of school and said, "Mom, school is awesome. I'm so glad it's finally back to normal." That says and speaks volumes with these kids being back together without masking. So I would like to recommend that the parents continue to make the health decisions for their children and not the board, because I think that is a legal liability. Before and last year with masking, it was the state mandate that held that, and they held that liability. So wondering where the board is going to sit with the liability if there is a child that has a lung infection due to forcing this on them. I'd also recommend that, as in Kewaunee, they have a dashboard that shows active cases versus cases that are due to contact with an active person. I would like to see that at least updated weekly, if not daily, somewhere where parents can view how many cases are actually out there. I'd also like to understand how many cases we have this year so far versus last year. Because we did have masking all through last year, where do we sit with how many active cases are we this year? How's it compare? Because if masking was effective, we would have had zero to a few cases last year, especially contained or contaminated, if you will, at the school level and not outside of school. It's very difficult to prove where you're getting coronavirus from. So with that being said, I would like this to remain a parent's decision, and we're not saying no masks, we're saying it's up to the parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon now.
Thank you for allowing me to speak again. I am a parent and an RN, and I'm here to speak again against masking our kids. I know this is a very controversial and emotional topic. Let's take the emotion out of it and let's just look at the facts. First of all, masks do not work. Several studies have shown that COVID-19 is spread via aerosolizing droplets, which means the viral particle is smaller than the width of a hair, which will go right through any face masks except for an N95, which needs to be bit tested to the person. Second, COVID is never going away. Let's learn to live with it like any other virus and bacteria. Our kids are more susceptible to illnesses this year because they were isolated and masked all year long. Masking them again will only make the next flu season worse because they aren't being exposed. Kids that are symptomatic need to stay home. Never in history have we quarantined healthy people. Third, masks do cause harm. As I stated previously, masks cause bacterial and viral infections, low oxygen, high CO2 levels, shortness of breath, anxiety, headaches, dizziness, fainting, brain damage in young children, as well as psychological damage. We were told that masking our kids would be based on the amount of community spread and positive cases in the school district. The positive numbers are based on PCR testing, which is unreliable, especially the higher the psycho threshold. Even the inventor Carrie Mullis stated that the PCR should never be used as a diagnostic tool for infections. Where is your data? We as parents and taxpayers deserve transparency from you, and we would like to see the data that you're basing this decision on. Why not make an online dashboard, as Shelley said, for cases within the school district accessible for parents to see? What about influenza? According to the CDC, there have been 357 pediatric deaths from COVID in the last 18 months, with all of these having serious underlying conditions. Also from the CDC, 477 children died from influenza between 2018 and 2019. That is 120 more kids that died that year from the flu. Did you guys recommend masking our kids then? The CDC states that kids ages 0 to 19 have a survival rate of 99.9973 percent. Why are we masking and quarantining our kids with this statistic? We know that car and bike accidents and drowning are top causes of death in kids, yet we don't stop driving cars and we don't stop letting them ride bikes or swim. Masks are also dehumanizing, making them fearful of a virus that causes no harm to them is called child abuse. Making them think they will cause death or illness to someone if they don't wear a mask is not okay. My kids and I have a God-given innate immune system in which I have great confidence. We feed our kids food from the garden, they get adequate vitamin D, and they eat very little sugar. These are all proven to help strengthen the immune system, not a piece of cloth over their mouth. According to the FDA, masks are considered a medical device and are regulated when they're intended for a medical purpose, including related to helping prevent the spread of COVID. If worn properly, they may reduce the spread, but what kid wears their mask properly? They're constantly touching things, touching their masks, so on. Your job is to educate our kids. You are not elected to make medical decisions for them. My husband and I are the ones to make these decisions. We'll be very happy to sign a form stating we will not hold the board or school district liable if my kids get COVID. Again, I ask you, will you as a board and school district maintain liability if my kids get a lung or skin infection or pass out and get a head injury? What about the increasing mental health issues of our kids such as anxiety, suicidal thoughts, and psychological stress? Haven't our kids suffered enough? Let's, let us choose what's right for our kids. Thank you.
Russ? Sarah? Okay.
Hey, everybody. I don't have near the statistics that Shannon had, so she did a pretty good job with that. But I'm here tonight to basically say that we're all not anti-maskers, but we're anti-mandate. I have a child that's facing anxiety right now because of the mask, so we're battling through that on a day-to-day basis. Everybody here, I'm sure, watched Monday Night Football last night. There was 80,000 people in there and there wasn't any masks. I don't know why our kids have to be masked when there's 13 to 15 kids that are separated by desk space in a classroom. I have a few questions. I know Green Bay School District does have a mask exemption form that you can fill out. It is on their website. Is Algoma prepared to let us fill that out as an exemption to let our kids come to school with or without masks? Just give me answers.
I'm sorry, this isn't a discussion, but those are things we can consider.
Okay. So it is on their website, and then there's other exemptions that do withstand religious medical exemptions and the ADA Act, which does stand and will hold in court. And we have a fellow officer here, but I spoke to the sheriff last night, and he did swear to uphold the Constitution, and he would not be enforcing any, I guess, getting arrested or going to jail, fighting over this, so we are prepared to fight for it. That's all I got.
Jake?
Thank you. I as well believe it should be a choice to the parents, whether or not their children need to come to school wearing a mask or whether or not they come to school not wearing a mask. A question would be also as well, what happens at lunchtime in the cafeteria? Do all the children go down there and you've got 80 to 100 kids packed in a room, they all take their masks off and eat, and for that 20 minutes of that masks off, they're fine because they're eating? And then they put their mask back on and wear it the rest of the day, and everybody's fine? I guess that doesn't make sense to me when they're forced to wear it pretty much all day, and then 20 minutes out of the day, they can take them off and it's safe. I agree as well with the anxiety with the masks that it caused with young children, just because of the fact that they don't understand, and you can't sit them down and explain them and tell them, "These things we're telling you today," and have your child understand what you're talking about. So it's hard to explain it in a way that they understand. Yeah, it's difficult. I read on one of the boxes on the mask today, it's .3 microns. I don't have, the virus is smaller than .3 microns. The mask that they're selling you to curb this is allowing it to pass through. Again, it does not make sense to me. I'm a painter, I paint houses. We spray houses, you wear an N95, you're covered head to toe with a Tyvek suit, and you wear nylon over your head. At the end of the day, when you take all your PPE off, your protection gear, you remove your mask and you go outside into fresh air, you cough or sneeze inside of a rag, whatever you painted that day comes out. If you've known the viscosity of paint, it's much thicker than this virus. And if that N95 can't stop paint, it sure is not going to stop that. And we have just as many people that are vaccinated that are getting sick, that are unmasked that are getting sick, and that are masked that are getting sick. So if this vaccine that's out to help stop this can't hold it back or stop it and people are still getting it, then a simple piece of paper over your mouth is not going to stop this.
Okay, David?
So I guess I'm kind of new to Algoma. I moved here about eight years ago. I've been a soldier for most of my adult life, trained in CBRN, which is Chemical Biological Radiological and Nuclear Threat. I've also worked on the COVID Task Force last year, well, last year. I was one of the first people actually on that task force, both privately and military wise. What I can tell you about the masking is that in order to truly prevent yourself from getting COVID-19, and I'm going to echo a lot of people in here, you're going to have to cover your body, you have to tell, you're going to have to have a gas mask on, and there's numerous personal protection devices that you have to wear in order to prevent the COVID virus from entering your body, through your ears, through your, any open orifice on your body, because what do you think happens if I cough in someone's ear and they're wearing a mask? It's all connected, your nose and throat. Once the virus is in your body, it's in there. What are you going to do about it? The reality of it is, the COVID-19 epidemic that we're facing right now is mutated into a political problem more than it is a health problem. I worked on the state's task force, and I can tell you how many people that we serviced in the medical facilities on site there. Total was three, all of which survived, or an epidemic that was clogging hospitals. I only saw three people. Three, all recovered, thankfully. Now, I'm not saying there isn't a coronavirus, that it's not deadly and people aren't dying from it, but we've got to look at former vintages as well. Kewaunee County has a serious problem, and I don't know if anybody's been addressing it, obesity at 36 percent. I don't see anybody putting treadmills in the classrooms and the kids have to run all day to prevent obesity from killing them. Yet we're worried about a virus that's going to kill somebody in what, .003 percent chance? What are we teaching our kids? Are we teaching our kids to be afraid of everything and everybody around them? What do you think's going to happen when they grow up and they don't have the masks to protect them from other social interactions? It's psychologically detrimental to their health, and that's what we're seeing here. And I know that nothing that anybody says in this room is going to make a difference to what anybody on this board is going to think or say or vote for. Decisions probably already been made of what's going to happen, because it's based upon what our neighbors are doing. What's Door County doing? What's Green Bay doing? Why can't Algoma, the whole reason I moved here, by the way, was to get out of the city of Milwaukee. I wanted a better way of life for my kids, for my family, quieter, safer. But what happens if we market Algoma as, hey, we're a mask choice school versus everybody has to wear a mask? Do you think that's going to do more for people maybe from Door County, who are like, you know what, maybe I don't want my kids up here in Door County, maybe I want to move to Algoma, open up a business, bring more comics to the area? If we're more choice than, hey, everybody's going to do this? Why can't we be different than our neighbors? Just because Door County does something doesn't mean Algoma has to do it. It's not what that means at all. We could be different. They've tried this once before in the past, and I would like to address the vaccine proof as well, because that's actually causing more problems for children than anything else. The vaccine, if you look at the CDC website, and everybody's going to quote facts, I've got plenty of people in here quoting facts, so I'm not going to bore you with statistics, but the vaccine isn't doing so well in terms of side effects, especially in young adults and reproductive issues.
I don't really want to interrupt you, but we aren't going to be discussing vaccinations tonight, and you have six more minutes and five more people that want to talk, so.
Okay. Well, what I will say is that requiring proof of anything is wrong, and it's going to hurt children's self-esteem issues, because they don't have a choice as to whether they're vaccinated or wearing a mask, it's a parent's choice. If we don't choose to do that, then I guess they're just going to be segregated, like African-Americans were. We all saw how that turned out, so thank you for your time.
Katie?
Hi. I don't have facts and everything else, more just me from my heart. Forcing young children to wear masks for eight hours a day while attending school distracts them from learning and nearly eliminates nonverbal communication, harming phonetic development, and damaging human connection. I have a four-year-old that is just learning to find her way outside of her home, how to make friends and build relationships, how to enunciate and form her words properly. What sort of skills is she learning when she's being taught to stand six feet away from her friends? That physical contact is not okay, that she cannot watch the mouth of a teacher for help in properly sounding out her letters and words, that she can't even get hugs from a teacher should she need one in the middle of the day. Preventing anyone but especially a child from a basic human need of physical contact is nothing short of abuse. Most teachers took on this role because they actually care about children and want to help them grow and learn, not to push a political agenda on them at the age of four and describe a part of them that is innocent and pure. My 12-year-old got into the car in tears this afternoon because she won't be allowed to participate in choir, something that she loves and is good at because she's not vaccinated. This school has been teaching our children about bullying for years. What exactly do you think this sort of discrimination, exclusion, and separation of our children is? This is bullying at its very finest. Have you not tried to instill in them the courage to stand up to a bully for what they believe is right? It is my fundamental right as a parent to make decisions about the medical care of my children. Imposing a mask mandate infringes upon that right. I have the right to decide whether detrimental effects of forcing my children to wear a mask outweighs the comparatively slight risk of becoming seriously ill from COVID-19. If I lined up all the children in this district in front of you, could you point out my children? Do you even know which ones they are? You probably don't. So please tell me how that makes you qualified to determine what is best for my children. Have you ever asked the parents in this district how they feel and what they want for their children? When is enough enough? When will more people stand up to do what is right, especially when it comes to our children? Didn't your parents teach you that if everyone else jumps off a cliff, that it doesn't mean you have to? Shame on anyone who blindly follows the herd over the cliff and attempts to take our children with them. They deserve advocates, they deserve someone that will stand up and fight for them, but they deserve better.
Bridget?
I'm Bridget Ray. I am an RN also, and I guess I'm kind of in the minority, seeing everybody doesn't have a mask on, but I will say that opinions, mine, yours, do not matter when it comes to the health of our community and kids. And I do have fact-based learning, and CDC recommends, and I'm quoting it, "Universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to K through 12 schools regardless of vaccination status." Also says children should return to full-time, in-person learning in the fall with layered prevention strategies in place. And this was changed on August 4th. So they are agreeing that we should all be seeing our kids in person, but they're also saying that the masking is going to help with this pandemic. And parents' decision, I'd be all for that, except that it affects other kids. So that's all I got.
Lisa?
No applause? Come on. Hi, my name is Lisa. I'm actually from Kewaunee, I'm not from here. I came to help support you guys, and I crunched many numbers throughout this whole process. You probably got a email today from somebody else regarding them. I'm going to go for them, especially since not everybody here has heard them.
Well, I have a question, though, and then I will make this a decision of this group. We have a few more people that are here from the district that signed up to speak, and we literally have about a minute, so.
Bart, can we waive that 20 minutes, considering the circumstance here? I would be, I would be in favor of that. I mean, we're not going to waive it by 20 minutes, but can we waive that a little bit?
All right, if everybody is considerate and about time, we can waive it. All right, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I'll make it really fast. The data on DHS website goes back to January 22nd of 2020, that is 20 months ago, that's when they started collecting this data. Since then, kids 19 and under have counted for 514 positive cases in our county, that is not counting if somebody has tested positive more than once. Okay, so when I did all the math, 300, or 3,096 positive cases in our county, same thing, looked at what your enrollment is, your district has counted for 3.3 percent of all cases that our county has ever had. That is minuscule. And last year, you were masked the entire year, correct? So really, your masks aren't doing much of anything. So just like in Kewaunee, I agree, you brought it up, we have a dashboard, parents can see every day, our superintendent works very well with our community, he and the board are not willing to make changes without looking at very strong specifics. Is it an isolated, is it just one grade level? Is it, have they been vaccinated or not? Can they do something where it just maybe helps mitigate that proof that's being affected without doing it for the whole school, and they're doing it for a week or two and then seeing what the numbers are look like? I would definitely encourage you to keep the choice of medical decisions in the parents' hands. Lisa?
Oh, that was me.
Oh, that was you? Okay.
Yeah, Jody, Jody Parents.
I have two grandchildren, two granddaughters in Algoma Elementary. And I stand to speak in support of Algoma School District adopting the CDC guidelines for school. The people at the CDC are the experts, just like you all are the experts, just like you all are the experts in public education. I believe in choice. I believe that all choices, however, have consequences. We have laws, we have many laws. Ages ago, we adopted speed limits to lessen the likelihood of deadly accidents. A person may still choose to speed, the consequences that they may get stopped and ticketed, and in too many cases, however, speed is a prominent cause of traffic deaths, as was stated earlier, and many of those who die were the innocent victims of someone who chose to ignore the expert warnings that excessive speed kills. People are afraid to exercise choice all the time until their choice could cost an innocent life. That is precedent that we have set in America. And while I'm thrilled to hear of all of the stories of healthy children, my granddaughters have a father, my son, who just last year was diagnosed with brain cancer. He underwent treatment, and so far, he's responding to that treatment, but he has an underlying condition. The chance of him dying, if he contracted the virus, is as real as me standing here. So while we can talk about theories and numbers, until it hits home, that that kid was healthy, his daughters are healthy, we also eat out of the garden, but stuff happens. So my grands wear their masks every day to quote, "Not get daddy sick." And at ages five and six, while at school and on the school bus, they are left to their own devices to deal with this immense peer pressure to not wear them, because nobody else wears them. And I agree that kids shouldn't have to deal with this. It should be the expert's decision. The reality is that we don't know who are the most vulnerable among us. The kids in my grands' class and their parents don't know that the girl's daddy will most likely die if the girls bring something home. It's not about necessarily the kids getting sick. The facts show that the mortality rate in children is a lot less than those who are immunocompromised, like my son, like my nephew, like my mother-in-law. We just don't know how many other cases like this are out there. The challenge is to mitigate the risk. The board's challenge is to mitigate risk for the least of us. That's what kindness does. That's what kindness means. That's why kindness matters. Thank you.
Hope Coppins?
Hi, everybody. My name's Hope. I do not have any kids in this school district, but I just wanted to talk. I'm a nurse and a patriot, and I believe in the facts, so I don't want to hurt anyone's feelings about masks. They're 10 percent effective when worn correctly. We know that's not going to help the spread at all. We've seen it, we've seen kids get sick with masks. It shouldn't be other people's responsibility to not get other people sick. We are responsible for ourselves, and we have our God-given rights to choose what medical things we want in our body and on our body. We can't help other people. We have a choice to keep our kids in school, and if people have to pull their kids out of school due to this mask mandate, that's unconstitutional. We have a right to an education, our kids have a right to an education. We also know from statistics that masks cause developmental delays in kids, they can't see facial expressions, and they develop later in the emotional and functional ability, like some people said, with enunciation and emotions. We can't see other people, we can't give them gratitude, we can't give them confirmation that they're doing well, or reiterate that they're not doing well by frown or sad face, we can't show emotions. We have to be responsible for ourselves, parents need to be responsible for their children. The CDC is not an expert on any children, the parents are responsible for our children. We know what's best for our children, and, I'm sorry, but the board doesn't know what's best for our children, and nobody in this room knows what's best for our children except us, and that's why it needs to stay optional. We can't be scared and live in fear and worry about other people, and I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, because I'm a neuronurse, so I deal with people all the time with frankincense, and I'm so sorry, but that can't be on other people. That can't be on other people's shoulders to take care and make sure your kids don't get sick, to make sure that those other people don't get sick. We have to be responsible for ourselves and make informed decisions for ourselves and our children. Thank you.
We've seen kids get sick with masks. It shouldn't be other people's responsibility to not get other people sick. We are responsible for ourselves, and we have our God-given rights to choose what medical things we want in our body and on our body. We can't help other people. We have a choice to keep our kids in school. And if people have to pull their kids out of school due to this mask mandate, that's unconstitutional. We have a right to education. Our kids have a right to an education. We also know from statistics that masks cause developmental delays in kids. They can't see facial expressions, and they develop later in the emotional and functional ability, like some people said, with enunciation and emotions. We can't see other people. We can't give them gratitude. We can't give them confirmation that they're doing well or reiterate that they're not doing well by frown or sad face. We can't show emotions. We have to be responsible for ourselves. Parents need to be responsible for their children. The CDC is not an expert on any children. The parents are responsible for our children. We know what's best for our children, and I'm sorry, but the board doesn't know what's best for our children, and nobody in this room knows what's best for our children except us, and that's why it needs to stay optional. We can't be scared and live in fear and worry about other people. And I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, because I'm a neuronurse, so I deal with people all the time with frankincense, and I'm so sorry. But that can't be on other people. That can't be on other people's shoulders to take care and make sure your kids don't get sick, to make sure that those other people don't get sick. We have to be responsible for ourselves and make informed decisions for ourselves and our children. Thank you.
All right, thank you for all your comments. We will move on. Discussion item, superintendent report.
So I will give a report on what I was asked to give a report on. I'm sure everybody here wants me to have every answer for every question ever known to man, but I don't have it, so I'll give you what I have. Percentage of vaccinated staff, 80, district-wide. Students 12 and older, 45%. Since the start of the school year, we have 67 kids that have been close contacts. We have 18 positive cases. Of those 18 positive cases and 67 close contacts, it's resulted in 649 instructional days missed from in the building. Staff, you have seven close contacts, eight positive cases, 105 instructional days missed by staff. As discussed a lot today, we obviously employ as many mitigation strategies as we possibly can. We have our COVID decision tree. We do our best to navigate every situation that comes up because they are all different. I know everybody likes to treat everything the same, but they're not the same. This year, we have onsite testing. It has actually helped immensely to minimize the number of close contacts, and it also has helped get kids back sooner. Obviously, people want their kids in school, so a number of people have been getting those tests on day seven to get their kids back to school. We also have individualized health plans for those students with underlying health concerns. So parents also do have the right, if they have a child with an underlying health concern, that they can require anyone who works individually with that child to obviously use protective measures to their discretion. Cohort grouping, while not to the degree that we had it last year, we still obviously try to do that. Social distancing, obviously try to do that. What I will say throughout all of this, I agree with a lot of statements regarding how we have started this school year. I work with kids on a daily basis. I work with a lot of kids one-on-one. Right before this meeting today, I got spit in my face because I work with kids that closely, okay? So this is a pretty hot-button issue, and everybody wants to point fingers, and I'm trying to navigate what is an impossible position. It's impossible. And I just want people to understand that there are a ton of staff members here, and there are tons of kids here that we're doing the absolute best that we possibly can. Nobody is coming here trying to create some type of problem. Nobody's coming here to try in these days of school. Nobody's coming here to do, I could go on for hours, okay? The kids that come here on a daily basis come here to work with teachers, and we do the absolute best that we possibly can. The last thing I'll say is I'm not the policymaker, okay? So I appreciate that I have a board that recognizes that. They are also in an impossible situation, okay? And this happens in school districts all over the country. And I just want people to keep that in mind because, at the end of the day, I went to school with some of the people in here. I've employed some of the people in here, so I've worked with a lot of people in here. I would hope that we can all continue to work together, and obviously, we don't have to agree on everything, but it sure would be nice to work together instead of against each other.
The board certainly can ask you any questions, and we don't need applause without anything.
Nick, go ahead. Are you done?
Yep.
Out of the 67, out of the 18 positive cases, can you break that down into school?
I'd rather not because that creates a lot of division, but I can say.
Majority, minority?
Elementary, majority.
Any other questions on?
Just maybe a reference to the mitigation policies that we're using with the, I'm sorry, I have a call. With the equipment that we have in the classrooms to purify and clean the air. We want to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, we have them in places, but we also have had, you know, students.
Get sick there.
Get sick, so.
But we're trying our best.
We are. I mean, I think everybody's trying, right? But, I mean, we have had people, I do quote-unquote everything right that have.
So the 105 days that the staff has missed, have we had to cover those ourselves?
Not all of them, because not all of them are classroom teachers. So some of them obviously have different scope of work, so in many cases, we can move things around or shuffle. Obviously, building-specific, those strategies are a little bit different. Up here, you have a lot of teachers that you can pull from, so you can use seven teachers to cover seven periods. So there's not a giant subpool, as you probably can imagine, when we call people to sub in a school. Not a lot of people want to come to a school right now, so we are left, you know, pretty empty-handed. We don't have options sometimes, and that makes our decision-making, obviously impacts our decision-making, so.
Okay. Another question. Of the positive COVID cases, are they, can we link any to the school, or are they coming in from the outside? Because we can't control people doing the outside. They're still going to ball games, they're still going to soccer practice.
We have had, and it's a classroom at the elementary school, that it for sure happened in the classroom.
A classroom?
A classroom.
Any other questions for Nick?
I don't have any questions, but I do have some comments. Are we going to get to that point a bit or not? In our discussion?
We certainly can. I mean, we, there are.
Where are we on the, where are we here?
We are on discussion items, so if you have some discussion that you would like to bring up, that would be fine right here. It's the board discussion, not the community.
I realize this is a very passionate issue. I myself have a very hard time understanding people wearing a mask. I got that. I mean, I spent all days, I got up, I got up this morning, ate breakfast, I went right, went to my computer. I've got to find some information. And there's plenty out there. For every report that says masks don't work, you can find one that says they do. So you've got to take that with a grain of salt. However, they did a study. It showed 85% of those who contacted COVID-19 in July 2020 were mask wearers. So that mask isn't really helping that much in that instant, but then you've got to look at the science.
So what was the study?
It was from the CDC government website. I kind of looked at ones that were in the CDC because I didn't, when you go outside, they get political. So I kind of wanted to stick with that. They'd also, there was one on the CDC web or the NIH website that said, they did a study of masks that had filter materials in them, and it was good for over 95% for particles of five microns in diameter. However, the coronavirus is .125. So those masks aren't really stopping anything. They said you can add nylon layers. That's pretty good about more of an efficiency mask, but you can't breathe through that. So that's not going to work. One thing I did find out, and I was a little bit, as I was surprised, but really not surprised, is that when you look at all these studies about masks, they're going to community. This NIH gets a budget of $42 billion, and not one dollar has been spent on doing a study on masking kids. Not one dollar. So here we are, we've got the CDC making these recommendations based on what?
Well, I do believe, I do believe, I mean, if you've been reading all along, I mean, I would assume that most of the board has tried to stay educated with the things from Wisconsin Association of School Board and all the different links that they have because as much as we would like to feel like we're experts, and as much as we all have our own opinions, there is no way I would want to have a builder build my house without going to the building code because the people who make up the building code have done lots of different studies in lots of different ways to determine what's necessary, how many joists or whatever. I feel the same way. I have a background as a nurse, 43 years, but I'm not going to claim that I can understand or read every virology study or anything like that. A lot of it goes with my own experience. I will say, my own experience is, I did see people die at the hospital, unfortunately. I did, I did see people die without any family able to be with them. Horrible. This is an awful pandemic that we are all struggling to just figure out how we can all get along together and live and have a life. We're all really, really sick of it. I mean, as a person, I'm super sick of it. I can't imagine anybody isn't. As a board, though, we have to be careful to, like you said, not get too tied up in, in.
Well, I'm just saying, because the CDC puts out recommendations based on what? There aren't any studies on masking kids.
Yes, as I think, and again, if we're going to have discussion, we're not going to be able to continue this.
There are mitigation steps.
Okay, I'm sorry. Let's all not.
There are mitigation. Before I got a chance to finish, there are.
We're going to respond to you, so look at Ms. Paulman and respond to her that way.
I'm not trying to.
There are mitigation steps. Ventilation is number one. Distancing is two. Pouting is number three, and masks are number four. So masks are really, when you look at how it goes, probably have the most, the most least impact in the classroom. And I wonder how many of these masks, you're breathing in, and then you breathe out. So what gets trapped in those masks that you keep breathing in? And these kids wear these things for eight hours a day, they don't get to change it.
And Pat, you have an opinion, and it's based on some of the stuff that you've read. We're all going to have our opinions.
Isn't that what the discussion is about, opinion?
Yes, yeah. Opinion and facts, and I appreciate your sharing that. I'm not saying that you can't. We are going to go through in the next item, and we might, it might spur a lot more discussion, some of the other guidance that is out there. And this guidance isn't just CDC, but is, it is, I mean, we didn't print the 20, 30 page, which all of you have access to. Anybody has access to online in terms of the strategies for K-12 in Wisconsin mitigation. But these, and these came from CDC coronavirus. They also refer to other sites. The Department of Public Instruction for the state, the Health Department for the state, the American Academy of Pediatricians, and the CDC are all saying the same thing. So I guess, I think we as a board need to look at their guidance and their latest guidance. And unfortunately, some of last year's statistics don't apply to this year's Delta variant because this year's Delta variant is much more transmissible.
Yet their guidelines have gotten lessened.
So the new evidence on the Delta variant, guidance for fully vaccinated people, the CDC recommends universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, student, and visitors to K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status. As you said, they also say children should return to full-time in-person learning in the fall with layered prevention strategies in place. So unlike what you're, what you were reading, they list the masking first. They say students benefit from in-person learning and safely returning to in-person instruction in the fall was a priority. Our priority as a board is to figure out the best way to educate our kids. Says, "Due to the circulating and highly contagious Delta variant, CDC recommends that universal indoor masking by all students aged two and older, staff, teachers, visitors, regardless of vaccination status." In addition, they recommend schools maintain at least three feet of physical distance between students within classrooms when it's not possible to maintain a physical distance of at least three feet. It is especially important to layer multiple other prevention strategies. Screening, testing, ventilation, handwashing, respiratory etiquette, staying home when sick, and getting tested. Contact tracing in combination with quarantine and isolation. Many schools serve children under the age of 12 who are not eligible for vaccination at this time. This guidance, therefore, this guidance emphasizes implementing the layered prevention strategies. Locality should monitor community transmission, vaccination coverage, screening, testing occurrence. Additional considerations are, they get into the fact that there are going to be students that it is not going to work. Provide accommodations, modifications, and assistance for students, teachers, and staff with disabilities and other healthcare needs when implementing the safety protocols. And that certainly would also apply to masking. There are certainly going to be children that it's not going to work for. And they get into more detail. Again, we weren't going to print out and print out, but, you know, it talked about, obviously, children that are under two or can't take off their mask or have any kind of medical issue or anxiety issue. I mean, I am going to be the first to say that in a, in a world that I wish it could be, we wouldn't have masks on for the teachers or for the kids. There's so many good reasons not to wear a mask for education. I have some problems with some of the concerns people have in terms of, from a medical standpoint. Again, people can have their opinion, I can have mine. I feel I have a pretty good legitimate reason to feel I have some good understanding of it because I've been in the field for 43 years. But the bottom line is, we need to figure out the best way to keep kids in school. I think it's unacceptable to have 649 days missed with only not even, what? A little over three weeks of school. Now, one of the things that I put in play in your place is our current decision tree on COVID-19 and a COVID-19 return to school or workflow chart that had been done at one point. This happens to be Pervia Health, but it demonstrates another model that is based on science, but it is based on masking. And the difference for our district would be that it would tremendously reduce the requirement to quarantine. I realize that liability comes up in lots of people's letters and discussions in terms of, are you going to take the liability? Are you going to take the liability? I think that history and any kind of liability for a school district comes when you. that history and any kind of liability for a school district comes when you do not follow established guidelines that have been given to you. And again, whether we want them or totally agree with them or not, that is the best way to cover our liability. We have been sort of flying in the face of the recommendations by not having masking. I think it's time to try a different tactic. And when there was an ability with a loosened guideline on quarantine, which basically, in very tiny print, sorry?
It's very tiny print.
Because I wanted to show these. Our current decision tree has if you're not vaccinated and you have no symptoms, but you've been in contact with somebody, you right now have to stay home, isolate, and quarantine for fourteen days. On these new, if masking policy is in place and you don't have symptoms and you have that close contact exposure, if both the positive and close contacts in the classroom are masked, you can go to school. This is based on a medical system, based on some regulations. So it would allow us to not send out kids. It would, I mean, currently, if somebody's sick, they have to stay home. That wouldn't change. If somebody's symptoms, in this, again, guideline, if it's mild symptoms and it lasts less than twenty-four hours and they didn't have any positive contacts, they can come to school. But it's all based on wearing a mask. And I hear, I hear that there's anxiety. I have grandsons in a different school system. I think half of it is a matter of, we have to be careful how we present it. I mean, my grandsons basically, and I disagree with the one nurse who said we aren't responsible for others, I totally believe we are. I believe that, yes, we have to be accountable for ourselves, but I think in us as any society, we have to be also cognizant of our effect on others. And my grandsons basically are, say they're wearing their masks so they can, because I have very healthy grandsons, I'm blessed with that, to keep their classmates safe and to keep the school open and to keep being able to go to school. And that works for them. They're not scared of them. They're not, I'm not saying that's going to work for everybody, but I feel like we need to try something different. I'm also, I mean, truly, if it was totally up to me, I'm just one member of the board and, you know, from a personal standpoint, everything would be very, very strict. We never would have been optional from the very beginning in school because it goes against every fiber of my body. Because if you've had, like some people say, it's an emotional issue. And if you've had personal experience with it, it makes it that much more emotional. So, but, my role is to have, to have a consensus of the board and to make the best decisions for our district. We tried without masks. I think we need to try something different. I also think we need to periodically review if it made a difference.
If the board's goal is to do what's best for education, how many students are going to drop out? How many teachers are going to be-
And I also-
How many children in Wisconsin have died of COVID since the dawn of COVID? Do you guys know that?
What if yours was the person that did?
Three. It's three.
I am going to ask everyone to leave if you can't allow us to continue our meeting.
I'm going to say one, and then I'm going to get out of here. But I just have a question. Just one question regarding religious exemption. So if you're a religious person and it's against your religion to have a mask on, is the school going to honor that as it is a religious freedom? Might be something to think about because I think there's going to be a lot of conversions in this entire-
I believe, I believe that there will be lots of individual situations.
Thank you.
I'm going to follow his step.
Barb, what exactly are you proposing?
You gave a whole entire year to masking and you're going to shut down unmasking.
I am proposing a discussion that people, I've given my opinion and I've heard none of yours, okay? I would love to hear the rest of you. Yeah.
Of the sixty-seven close contacts, we know only resulted in a positive case. You said there were sixty-seven people in close contact. Did I get that wrong?
Oh, that's right.
Okay. So do we know how many of those resulted in a positive case?
Probably the eighteen.
Well, no, there was those eighteen positive cases in sixty-seven. So can we say-
Right. So, for instance-
We could say that eighteen of those sixty-seven? No?
Oh, is that what it started at?
So what you're asking is, for, I don't, I don't have that number, but-
Okay.
Basically, when, every situation is different, right? So if I was positive, right, and I didn't have any close contacts, it wouldn't have any impact on the sixty-seven.
Okay.
However, if I am positive and I was in an environment where none of these practices could be taken, right? So if I'm in a confined area, say, a van, okay, then every single person in there is a close contact, right? Because they don't have, there's no way away from that. So one person could be twenty, right? So it's really difficult for me to give you a positive equals this many close contacts because every single one is different.
And it's impossible to figure out how many of those close contacts became positive.
Are we, are we too aggressive with our close contacts? I mean, are we making these people quarantine for close contact?
Well, that's my feeling.
You know, they're not-
Can we make a recommendation to help them?
I don't know. I'm just, you know, are we too aggressive with it as to what I'm asking?
Contact tracing this year is much more restrictive than it was last year. Last year, you were sending the whole classrooms. You're not doing that anymore.
Yes, we were. Yeah.
Right? So that's not, you know, that's the difference. Right? So even, even this number, right, is pretty miniscule when you compare it to what we went through last year.
True.
Okay? So it's, it's difficult to compare apples to oranges, even district to district, right? Because how they go through the close contact process-
It's very different.
It can be very different.
Very different.
And none of us know the situation surrounding a positive case, right?
Right.
Just know when you're quarantining a child, you're quarantining a parent.
Jake, did Nikki and I not, we can't start discussion. Please don't.
My next question is when we send these kids home or, you know, they have to quarantine or whatever for ten or fourteen days, are we sending homework with them? Or we just give them a two-week-
It's, it's on the-
Paytis.
Yes. And I think there's a wide variety of engagement with that.
In other words, we lose-
On both sides.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, it's difficult. It's hard on the teachers. It's hard on the students. It's hard on the parents.
Well, I mean, when I used to take my kids out to go to Florida, doggone it, they had a lot of homework to do, you know, that was sent home, you know?
Well, and again, quarantining or the kids being sick doesn't just affect the kid from a health standpoint or whatever. It affects the parent who has to stay home from work or make arrangements for the kid to be home. I mean, it's a whole, a whole domino effect.
I mean, I can tell you that that is a conversation, right, that I've had with other superintendents, that I've had with leaders of hospitals and all that, right? Because you can take COVID out of it, right? If there's nobody there to run a hospital, right, because they're home taking care of children, that's a huge issue for that community, right? So I, I think the, the close contact quarantining, yeah, it's, it's a huge issue. And how do we get that, you know, so that, you know, it's really difficult. It is really difficult because even if you put it all in, it's not, everybody thinks that it's a either or it's not. Because every single situation is different. Every single one. Since the day we started this, every single one is different, right? And how people respond to them entirely different. So, I mean, I'm trying to answer the question, but I'm-
I'm just trying to come up with some, get this straight in my head on all of that.
Because I, I will say, I don't get negative feedback from students that have contracted, you know, coronavirus and they're out. I don't get bad feedback. I get bad feedback from, my kid's been out for ten days. They came back to school, an event happened, and now they're quarantined again. So-
From being exposed.
Right. So we've had that. We've had kids out of school for a month at a time. They've never, they've had the unfortunate experience of being in close contact to positive cases.
Okay, so how does masking redefine close contact so that we are quarantining fewer kids?
On that, this is a tree. If both parties were masked, you wouldn't have-
That wouldn't count as close contact. So Joanne and I would not count as a close contact.
She's positive. No.
Okay. So I could stay in school even if Joanne was home with COVID.
The defining difference would be if you developed symptoms. I mean, that still would be the same. You know, somebody with symptoms-
Finding difference is what?
Is symptoms.
Yeah. If she develops some.
But somebody with no symptoms, doesn't matter if five kids in a class were positive with this, if you were wearing a mask and they were wearing masks, you would not have to quarantine. And that's totally different than our current thing, which requires some to, and, and puts, you know, so-
So that seems like it would really help us keep kids in school a lot more than where we're struggling with right now, if that was the case. So if we had a mask exemption form or policy, have you done research on, Green Bay, I guess, was mentioned as well?
I haven't done research on it. I know they exist.
There are, there's always-
There's always-
-opportunity for parents to, to work with their doctor if there's any, you know, or whatever. I mean, saying that, that their child needs an exemption. And I don't think that that is ever not considered. I mean, because again, as was brought up tonight, the school, the teachers, certainly the board, we're a million steps away, don't know any individual kid or what their needs would be. So that still is going to be ultimately a decision of a parent and their doctor or whoever is involved in terms of if, if there needs to be some exemptions. And, yeah, and of course, what was also brought up, there might be some kind of religious exemption. I mean, I doubt it for masking, but certainly that gets into the whole vaccination thing.
Did we have any last year? Did we have any exemptions last year for students? No? Okay.
You mean based on religion?
Anything.
Based on anything.
And could we possibly have some kind of a recommendation for masks-
We don't have-
For children? No, maybe that would be helpful or something. If it's a mask that's uncomfortable or that isn't working, might there be an opportunity to say, these have a mask that we think would be more useful or helpful or welcoming to children or to families?
In terms of a different kind of mask?
A different kind. I don't, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, because certainly, you know, there are some suggestions in there, like a nylon or something. That would be absolutely impossible to breathe through. That would be ridiculous. And that would be where you could run into some of those trouble with CO2 and some of that kind of thing. And of course, cleanliness of the mask makes a difference too in terms of potential problems. So. So you asked, what am I actually looking for?
I just want to say one more thing. You know, we were talking about maybe visiting this often, which I think is a good idea. Things are changing rapidly. We know that the vaccines are going to be available for younger children. That might change things as well. Where, you know, what our percentage of staff and students right now, that's going to change too. So that will be helpful in readdressing and reconsidering and more information. I don't know. I'm just, I went without masks for quite a while and I'm really old enough that I need to be very careful, as young people do as well. So I think, I'm taking responsibility, as many of us are in many ways, some obvious, some not obvious, I'm sure. But we do have a responsibility to do the best we can, given what we know and given where the, where the science is and where the medical community is. I, that's, that's where I need to-
Well, another fact, whether, you know, which is just again in the community interest, is if anybody's watching the news, the doctors in Green Bay are pleading with people to do everything they can to avoid the spread. And the hospitals are getting full. And, and you, you know, I feel free to call a hospital if you don't believe me because I just rechecked that with one of my coworkers that-
My sister works at one. I'm sorry, it was not.
Your understaffed.
So, anyway, it's, so we want, so we as a community just need to try and have beds and staff available for people who need it, COVID or not. I'm not just saying COVID. And I'm not blaming anybody for filling the beds. I'm just agreeing with you that there is a public responsibility of everybody to try and minimize, minimize the spread.
Whatever decision we make tonight, I would want us to look at that in a month or two months to see exactly where, where we're going.
I mean, I agree. I, I just feel like, you know, like you said, if there is a student that has been subject because of quarantine, because of our best ability to try and follow guidelines, to give ourselves cover, because we aren't the experts and the experts are the ones coming down with all these guidelines and they're changing them. It's a moving target. So it can be very frustrating. But hopefully there, you know, thousands of people all around the country that are looking at all the different studies are still trying to come up with the best recommendations. I think we need cover. I think we need to do something different. And I think a child that has missed thirty days of instruction already, or I guess it wouldn't be possible at this point, we haven't had thirty days. But even a chunk of half of that is not getting educated. And nothing against parents or babysitters or grandparents or whatever, but to be honest with you, as a grandparent, if my kids had to stay home with me so that my kids could work, I wouldn't be an effective educator. I mean, I'd do my best with the stuff that was given to me, but that's not my expertise. So we need the kids in school. And we want to try and do it in the safest way possible. And we are not trying to take away parents' ability to decide what's best for the kids. But-
Are you prepared for kids to go virtual then? Because my son will not wear one.
I would feel terrible if a child-
I got a question. I just got a question. Amanda kind of hit on it, but I was waiting to get this in. If, is the option still out there for virtual if parents decide, I don't want my child in a mask for eight hours? Is that option still there?
We can put it there.
We can what?
We can put it there.
Okay. I, I, I didn't know because I knew we didn't, I don't know if we were offering it or not. Okay. Just a question.
I mean, I mean, that all, you know, changed a lot last year, how we delivered that.
Yeah.
And it depends, again, grade level, what teacher is, all those kind of things. So for me to make a blanket statement, this is what we're going to do, it just sets me up for, you know, solving that on an individual basis, which-
I don't think we planned to have that option. I think that's his answer is.
We didn't, we didn't plan to have it, right?
No, but we didn't, we didn't plan on changing this either, you know, when we, you know, so-
By the end of last year, most people did put their kids back in school-
We did not.
-with the masking.
We did not.
So.
Can you compromise and put a mask on a child instead of quarantining them and leave it optional the rest of the year? Just for a week to help mitigate it and keep them out of quarantine? Just for a week to help mitigate it and keep them out of quarantine? That's a compromise that we're willing to give.
See, I think the trouble with, I mean, there's even hugely different factors that affect middle school, high school, and the elementary school. Simply because of vaccination percentages and ability to get it. Whether, again, that's parental choice, I'm not going to tell somebody what to do about that. But I think from a simplicity standpoint, it would be easiest if we just made the decision so that families and parents and students would all have the same rules all the time at both schools. Within, within judgment calls. Because right now, I mean, well, first of all, right now, it is not an option not to wear a mask on a public road in a bus. And if we're not, if our students are not masked on a bus or in a van or whatever, we could be fined as a district. Because that's nothing that we have control over. That's a federal thing that never went away.
You're going to be fined seventy-five thousand dollars per occurrence by violating the ADH Act, which I have the exemption for, and I will report it.
So, it, you know, so that is, you know, so that's a given. And, I don't know, there's, it's a complex decision. I, you know, so we could say, it's different at the middle school, high school, because the kids are able to get vaccinated, there's more staff vaccinated, they're, they understand the idea of spacing and that kind of thing. Versus the elementary school. I, I think it gets more complicated though. I'm open to discussion. I'm not trying to make the decision for the board, I'm giving my opinion.
Okay, I think most parents who don't want their kids in a mask are going to understand that from time to time, your kids are going to be quarantined. Otherwise, you'd be having them in a mask, right?
Yeah.
I do like Kiwanis' idea of, you know, if you've got an outbreak in your classroom, you've got to wear a mask so this is over.
One week.
But I don't unders, I'm trying to get it through my head, why we want to mask everybody if there is an outbreak in the fifth grade class or the fourth grade class. Unless there's family, you know, there's close contact, you've got a fourth grader and a fifth grader. You might have to do that. But I do like that idea. And, I mean, I'm just trying to think out of the box and to compromise somewhat. I think a lot of parents don't want their kids in these masks for eight hours a day. You know, I don't, you know, if we, do kids, I mean, do they have, they're sitting at their desk and they're socially distanced, so they have to keep that mask on? If they're getting up, walking around the room, yeah, by all means, maybe they need to put it on. I mean, is that an option? I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to be a little bit, you know, so we can compromise here and, you know, everybody is somewhat satisfied. Because the emails I got from people, the majority were, do not change your option. I had two out of the many that I had that wanted to keep, you know, wanted to mask. So, I'm trying to figure out if we can socially distance these kids a better, in a better way. And, you know, when they're up and, like I said, when they're up and about, you know, okay, you've got to put your mask on. When, if you're going to go, you know, or if you've got to go to the, you know, you're going to get up and leave the classroom for a reason, you've got to put your mask on. But if you're sitting at your desk and that person's three feet away and that person's three feet away, do they have to wear a mask? I'm just throwing it out there.
The trouble is, it's, if we have too many different scenarios, it just seems more complicated. I mean, I guess if, I mean, give your input on that. I mean, the idea being.
What do you think of that? I'm just curious.
I mean, I can share with you, so you have some school districts around us that have very, very, very restrictive policies. Seven fifty-five to two fifty-five, right? My son played in an eighth grade football game last night at Perry Field. There wasn't a mask around. And we played the most restrictive school in this entire area, this entire state, I would say. And they didn't, right? So, I think what, what I would like to see is that.
Pandemic will wait, yeah, me too.
Well, here's what's going to happen. I'll just be blunt to everybody, okay? You're going to lose everybody in education, you're going to lose everybody in healthcare, okay? Because you can't win, right? So, and it doesn't matter about the decision. My fear is, I have a kid in eighth grade and I have a kid in fifth grade and I really value their education, so I would really like to see great people sticking to education. And I also understand that there are areas that are hot, okay, I'll use that term, okay? What we run into then is the internal, right, of, they have, let's say, you have a classroom with masks on, right? And they're going to transition. And you have the internal problems, right? Of people feeling like they are being treated differently than others, right? So, I, 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 I don't mind the idea. It just requires a level of collaboration that I haven't seen in a long time, right? Because it would require, right, all the parents in that classroom to buy into that. That seems like a stretch for me right now, right? Because I agree with your thinking, okay, in the sense of, if there's multiple positive cases in X classroom, that classroom needs to have a mask on, right? And I would love for that to be, right? But you, everybody in this room knows that whether I say it or the school board says it, you're not going to get a hundred percent of people to do it. So then you're right back at square one. So I understand the language of compromising, but it takes both parties, right? And.
So, say we, say, okay, masks are mandated, how are we going to get a hundred percent of people to buy into that?
You're not.
You're not.
We know that. We know that. We've had this conversation a hundred times, right? My number one job as a person in education is I want to educate kids. That's why I work with kids. That's why I put my, do it every single day, okay, because I value that. I also know that people come and tell me that the sun came up over there yesterday. It didn't, it still comes up over there, right? So, even if you have a mask mandate, you're going to have the problems. There's just, there's just.
So why don't we, again, why can't we compromise with this and see how that goes?
See, I think, in my mind, we did. We started out without a mask mandate, where many, many school districts didn't. I mean, many school districts started with masks at the very beginning of school.
Not around here, everybody else is doing it.
So, you take, if you take your compromising logic, okay? If we say that if a classroom has had a positive case, right, or has a current positive case, that all of those classrooms are masked.
Yeah. For two weeks.
So, seven to ten days, just like we have right now with close contact quarantine.
Well, we have the option to be first at home instead of masking them.
We just got to work on that.
See, see, that's, that's the issue, right? Is, I want to be able to work with everybody, but it's, it's.
We can't have a million exceptions all the time.
Right? So.
Keep it options. Case closed.
That doesn't, that doesn't address the fifty percent or forty percent or whatever of parents that want masks.
How are those other schools doing that have masks all rest of the year?
Say that again.
What's the number of them?
We're a hard body show, there's fifty percent.
Because their concern is that their kids getting exposed.
In our district, there's the majority on masks?
No, I didn't say the majority, no. I said it doesn't address those who don't want masks.
But what was the percentage you just said?
I said, I mean, I can't, I don't know what it is. But based on just emails, there's certainly a lot more that want it optional than other. But there is a percentage.
So you can't please everyone?
No, we can't.
You can't please everyone?
But pleasing people isn't our job, guys.
You're not medically.
Very true.
We are not medical experts. We are not the actual ones on the ground doing the educating. We are policy people and we try and make decisions.
Yes, every day.
And we evaluate whether they work or not. I think this hasn't worked.
If it's mandatory.
And so this is what, so we, so we, and I do not, and to, to, I already addressed that I do not believe that this virus is the same as the virus we were dealing with last year. And people can chuckle or whatever, but I doubt that they have the education behind the ninety-nine percent people, so.
So how is, how do you think Kiwanis' making that go?
I, I don't think that's as crystal clear as that was portrayed.
I mean, it sounds great.
I'm not there, I'm not.
I did contact the head of their school board.
So, that's honestly the first that I've heard of that.
Yeah, because I asked him, I said, are you guys thinking of changing your policy? And he said, no.
And what is the policy?
Not changing their ma, their options.
Their masking, yeah, they have it optional. He said, no. I just wanted to. So then I, but he didn't elaborate on how they were making this work until she.
Or how many kids have been out, how many days lost on students.
Well, they also do contact tracing a little different than we do too, so I found that out too. They're a little bit more lenient with it, sort of saying. For whatever, they've only got two cases, so.
Two positive cases in the district?
Two positive cases in the whole district?
That's what I was.
And, and what do we have?
Amongst their kids. Amongst their kids. I don't think he would have lied to me.
But you only know, I mean, that requires testing.
Yes, if they don't test.
Why test them?
I'm just saying what he told me. But I don't think he would lie to me.
No, I'm sure he didn't lie to you.
You guys are also tested.
So what is the percentage of kids wearing masks now that we're optional? Do we have kids wearing masks?
Yeah, I mean, less than a couple percent, maybe.
Okay, and?
I would say it's more situational, honestly. I see many kids throughout the day without masks, but then I also see them in certain areas where they do. So, that's based on their own preference.
At the middle school, high school level, I think that makes perfect sense. Because they have the ability to make those decisions for themselves.
Another compromise, I mean, couldn't we just, okay, I know sometimes you do group work, you know, so you're in group work for twenty minutes or so? Couldn't you just say, okay, you guys, so you, so we don't have that close contact? Put a mask on for twenty minutes.
Don't do group work.
I'm just trying to keep it, you know, socially distanced, so when you do have a case, we don't lose all these kids out of school, we don't have to quarantine them. I mean, we have.
But under what guidelines?
We have the filtration systems in place, right? I mean, and they're saying that is huge, huge, when our glare read today, that's huge, putting, you know, filtration systems in. So I'm, you know, I'm trying to figure out a way to keep them in school, keep the mask semi-optional. And if a teacher feels they need to put it on for close contact.
Then we, so your proposal would be, we basically keep everything the same? With people's, with people's judgment and, and the quarantine and all that would stay the same then?
But I think I hear Nick saying that there's some cases where she feels like if it's, you know, if they, if you have transmission going on or whatever in a classroom, that you can, I guess, use the language that it's, you know, strongly encouraged.
But we'd still have to follow these quarantine guidelines?
Right, but you're still going to, when you look at the situation, okay? So if that, that would be aligned with.
That's right.
That's positive, right? But then the other two or three close contacts around her had a mask on? You know.
How often is that going to happen? Is that going to happen?
I don't know.
Because who would tell them to put a mask?
Try and review them.
What I'm saying is, like, if you're following Nick's logic, right? If we know that we have certain areas that are, we see it more, right, because we do. And we say, you know, here's a great idea, I mean, because here's what's going on, right? Then you're going to limit some, not all, Barb, at all.
No, no, and I understand, I understand the concept. I just don't understand how it can be implemented. Because in order to determine if there was a problem area, there'd have to be somebody positive. And at that point, with our current policy, most of the kids around would not have been masked. So they would have to be out quarantined. So they wouldn't be given the opportunity to just mask for a few weeks. Is that what I'm saying?
So the whole class would be out.
Right now, you've got a bunch of kids that are out.
Yeah, so I mean, that's what I'm trying to say. So how would you determine a hotspot without a positive? And if there was a positive without masking, then they'd all be out. So how would you then just mask them for a few weeks? I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm trying to understand how we look at it. Because, you know, I mean.
Right, because I, I think Barb's saying, once an infection has occurred, then it's too late for masking, right? I mean.
Right.
But we also don't know if it occurred there either, I mean.
But it wouldn't matter, it would still be a matter of spread. If somebody's positive in the class. Right now, if you find out somebody's positive, wherever, wherever they got it, I mean, like people have said, you can't tell where people get it. But if somebody's positive in a class, everybody that is around them right now, symptom or not, has to be quarantined.
And that's for fourteen days.
Not always, tend to be.
And.
And they can get tested, I guess, on day seven, and if they're negative, but. I mean, it's just, it's a mess. I'm not trying not to compromise.
No, you know, there's no masking in the stores, there's no masking in church anymore, there's no masking.
That's true.
Huh?
Our church, you have to wear a mask.
Not by us, fine, then. If you want to wear a mask, sit on the left side, if you don't want to wear a mask, sit on the right side, I guess. But I mean, there's, you can go into a store without masking. I walked into Kohl's today and they strongly encourage you to wear a mask. Yet they have their water fountains running. And I thought, well, what, what sense is that? But I mean, there's no other places that you need to wear a mask, so.
Well, I don't know that that is a good thing or not. So that's a whole different discussion. And, and bottom line is, it's not our decision how people decide to live or do their businesses or whatever outside of our district. It's our district. It's what we, we are only responsible for trying to figure out what will work within our district.
No, you're responsible for education. I guess my point is, we can't control what, I mean, goes around the school, I mean, what goes after school.
No, we can't.
I mean, these kids are getting together at the youth club now that it's open. I'm sure there's no masking down there. And I, I, yeah, it's hard to control it.
You know, I just.
We don't have control.
I just want to throw my hands up and say, what the heck? Don't wear a mask, I don't care anymore. And your child can die.
Do you wear a mask? All you know, with the name?
Yes, I wear a mask.
Our children.
That's uncalled for. We're completely uncalled for. You're not supporting for children's education?
I guess if we can compromise this, otherwise I think. Everyone sit here all night.
I know.
If you want to call my child right there, you just heard you say that. Change the policy, you want to kind of compromise a little bit, or?
Well, but I need a, I need a solid idea of a compromise. A so, a solid idea of a compromise. How do you implement it? Because it has to be a practice standpoint. So what is your thought?
Again, I think if, like Nick said, if there's hotspots.
And how do you determine a hotspot? How do you determine a hotspot?
If you've got a COVID case, you know, you've got, say, fourteen, thirteen, fourteen kids in a class and you've got a COVID case, yeah, I guess I would be, you know, taking a look at that until that one's cleared up.
So those kids would all be quarantined for fourteen days.
Didn't say that.
For last year.
Didn't say that.
Well, but we.
What you're saying is, put a mask on. Yeah, and if you, and if you want to take your kid out of school for those days because you don't want to wear a mask, that's your problem. You can take your kid out of school anytime you want, I believe. You know, that's what you want to do. I don't know, I'm just, I'm. I don't know, I'm just, I'm, I don't have a mask on, so, you know, I'm not a big mask proponent, but. I just can't see us, I can't, I just don't like us putting a mask mandate in, and if we've got case in third grade or fourth grade, and the whole kiboodle's got to wear a mask. That's my issue. Especially when I heard Kiwani, I thought, hmm, that's pretty interesting.
So if there's a child in third grade or fourth grade, and they have brothers and sisters that are in other grades.
Yeah, that could be a problem. That could be a problem.
So we could have three or four classes quarantined.
That could be a problem, yep. If those kids show symptoms, yeah, the kids show symptoms, but yeah, that could, that could be a problem.
So we could basically close the whole school down.
I think with too many families, that would be, close the whole school down.
Well, but I mean, we have to follow. We have to follow some guideline other than our own wishes.
Same things happened on the youth club on Friday night.
So we are either going to continue what we're doing or try a change for a defined period of time. Because we have to be covered, I'm sorry, liability, we have to have some rationale from some authorities for our desires in the district. So we have two options. We can try something different.
Another question?
Yeah?
Okay, if you don't like that idea, why can't we just, like I say, social distance, and when they're sitting at their desk, they can take that mask off? They're three feet apart from you, and three feet apart from you, and three feet apart from you, and three feet apart from you. I think a lot of the issue comes in wearing these masks eight hours a day, and, and, you know, the teachers, they're, put it on your nose, get it up over your nose, I mean, geez.
I can, I can see that possibly for the middle school, high school, but not for the grade school. I mean, because all of the recommendations state that that's just one part of it. And the fifteen minutes in a, you know, I mean, we're, if we're looking to prevent.
How do these kids eat dinner?
They recommend people not to smoke cigarettes.
Are they social distanced when they take their masks off when they eat?
Here?
Grade school? High school?
I mean, the eating cohorts, the eating cohorts at the elementary school. So it's just a, I, that's the reality of it, but they're not intermixing with the entire building.
No, no, it's only certain ones.
The kids aren't eating in their classrooms this year, right?
No.
And he, at the grade school either?
No.
So they're all in a room with their.
Okay, okay.
Not, not all of them.
Yeah. There's pods or whatever. Classrooms go down in sections, right? Yeah, yeah. So I mean, is that, is that reasonable to anybody besides me?
Well, so I think that that eating without social distancing is concerning. I think that we should think about that. I think that this idea of some kind of dashboard where people can have rapid access to information about where exposure has happened is really important for helping.
And within the school district, yes.
Families, yeah, have a sense of trust that there's transparency about where we have infections.
Any other discussion? Dave, do you have any input? I know you can't always hear me. Yes, I can. Yes, I can.
He's just walking. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I said, I'm just listening right now.
Oh, okay. So you don't have any new recommendation?
This is the last thing that you guys are talking about in lunchroom, I don't think we should be logged a whole group by one time in lunchroom during the evening, so don't worry about it. That's who they're mad from lunchroom, right, until they start eating, right?
Not right now, Dave. Hardly anybody is wearing a mask. Yes, thank you.
You heard me, Barb, right?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Dave.
So Nick, how do you think that would go over in classrooms if you said to the teachers, okay, you know, if you, if your kids are getting together in groups for a long period of time, they should really mask up? And if they're walking around their classroom, they should mask up. Otherwise, if they're sitting at their desk, they can, they can stay unmasked. How do you think that, how do you think that would go? How do you think they would be able, you think they'd be able to police that?
No.
Why not? These are adults. They're college-educated adults.
You said police, what that means?
Well, make it happen, right. I don't, I think that's unrealistic to expect of kids, to have so many different options during, okay, if you're sitting, it's one thing, if you're standing and walking, it's another, whatever.
Well, to me, it's pretty simple. I don't know. It's very simple. You get up and walk around, you gotta put your mask on at your desk, you don't. Just trying to get these kids out of a mask eight hours a day, you know. There were classrooms last year, we didn't have any cases, right, and they wore a mask and they had no cases.
Right, but they wear a mask. So we don't, so we don't know.
Did you just say they were wearing masks and there were no cases?
Yeah, but there were planned cases where you were masked.
We had cases.
And they had cases.
We had cases last year.
There were classrooms that didn't.
Oh.
And there were classrooms, my daughter was home for two weeks quarantined. So there were cases with masks on, but there were cases that didn't have masks.
Well, we can, you know, I guess, um, does, I don't think that's a practical, I mean, do you think that would be a, I don't think we're covered with anything except our existing decision tree for quarantine. If we did that little modification of masking, we'd still have a lot of people out as soon as there was a positive. Because there wouldn't be consistent masking, so as soon as there was a positive. But it doesn't matter.
But you, I mean, if you're saying that you have masking, right, if a kid chooses to wear a mask, right? And from right now, moving forward, if they have a mask, then they don't have to worry about quarantining, right? Isn't that an incentive for people to do it? Maybe, right? It's still, you know, you know, works with the other side.
All right, so you're.
Go forward with, with that.
Suggesting that the compromise.
To limit, I'm not.
Well, I, it's a complicated issue, and we're, we're trying to be covered with the expert guidelines, and we're trying to make it workable for our district.
Reduce the amount of kids that are home quarantined. I mean, I think it's.
I would think chairs would want that.
Addresses the issue, right? So, but if, you know, if they're not, I guess, their, their lives are a problem, right?
But we have that now, that if they're wearing a mask, they don't have to be quarantined, or don't we, with our current?
No, if you're a close contact right now, you're quarantined.
Regardless of wearing a mask. So that's.
Close quarantined, but if we kept, if we social distanced them.
No, I don't think that's gonna, we're not covered with that. I think what he's, what he's saying, well, that's part of it, because as was brought up, you know, masks aren't the, it, it takes a combination of things to have a good prevention strategy. What Nick is saying is, we'd be covered by some of this guidance to maybe modify our quarantine requirements if.
Because if a kid is.
If a kid is.
Teacher's positive, they're positive, right?
If somebody's positive, they're out, but what he's saying is, if the kid in the class was masked, he wouldn't have to quarantine. Whereas right now.
I mean, their choices, right, can go without masks, but then you're subject to quarantine.
So are we going to.
You run the risk of being quarantined.
Are we going to eliminate the close contact tracing?
No, not eliminate it, it's just whether they had a mask on or not.
So you're saying, once you get the notification that you've been in close contact to somebody that's now positive, you, now you would have the option of either writing out your quarantine at home or coming to school in a mask for that quarantine period? Is that what you're saying?
No.
Point in time, a point in time. So when they do contact tracing, if the kid had a mask on.
Then they can continue to come to school.
Right.
If they didn't, then they are subject to.
Gotcha, okay.
To try and reduce the quarantine periods for.
Sure.
So, I mean, individual still has a choice, right? We still have a process to follow, right? I don't think anybody's running for the hills saying that they have a victory, but it is a step. And I, I think you have to look at, you know, when we have what's causing some of it.
So we're talking about revisiting whatever we've decided to do. So if we can flesh out what we really mean by compromise, we need to then set another time to look at that and see if that's even feasible, if it has it worked, has it been, have parents and teachers been cooperative in carrying that out?
You, you would be able to see pretty quickly how much of an impact it's gonna have on quarantining, right? You would know that right instantly, right?
Because if.
Because the constant is gonna be positive, positive. I don't hear anybody arguing about that. I think people are arguing about, you know, the impact of quarantining, whether or not you had a mask on.
All right. The, well, that might address the concerns of the people who feel they've been unfairly treated because of, they are wearing a mask. I doubt that it's going to increase, but it would be lovely if it did. But basically, my concern is trying to reduce those missed days of school. It would be, it would be a step, would at least address.
You're not gonna totally reduce it, you're going to, that's a big chunk. And again, you know, six forty-nine, basically all that is is, you know, sixty-seven times seven, right? Some of those kids are out wearing that, so it's, all I'm trying to give you is an illustration, right?
Right.
If you can decrease the amount of time the kids are away from direct instruction from a teacher, I think that helps both the kid, helps the family, helps everything, right?
And that's to be our goal, to keep the kid in school after all.
So does everybody understand what we're talking about? The only change would be that in a case where there would be a positive in the classroom, certainly the child that was positive would have to be out on quarantine. But anybody else in the classroom that had been wearing a mask would not.
Close contact.
That would not have to be.
Close contact.
That was a close contact.
With a mask.
So the teacher needs to be aware of that, one would think that would happen.
And that's based on seating and all of that, yeah.
Brings me to another question. How do these teachers?
I can tell you right now, I mean, you can have a scenario where a staff member could be positive and really have no close contact with any students. Right, so then that really gets people bent out of shape, right? So this would be looking at positive, close contacts, and if there's masking, it's gonna minimize the number of kids that are missing, you know, seven to ten to whatever.
Because of other positive cases.
Right. But in the event that you have the unfortunate experience where you're the close contact without a mask multiple times, I guess that's really crappy luck.
You would be the one that would be out a lot.
Yeah, I just talked to a student today, feel bad for him, because really nothing that they did, right? Should have been in close contact twice, they've been in school one day.
Oh. So how.
But they weren't masked, or were they?
They were.
Okay, but what we're saying.
But if they, they were, then we could.
That if they have the option.
Situations where we have to transport, right? Think of athletics, right? Right? So any teams that go all over, those kids are, you're in a van, you have to get to Keel or Gibraltar or wherever, right? So if you say, hey, right, let's put the mask on for the time that we're all gonna be there, and you get there, right? If somebody was positive, then the whole thing doesn't have to work.
As long as they have the mask on for the ride and the, and when they get there. Well, I think that would be something that could be implemented and understandable, because that's what we have to have. We can't just make up something that is difficult to implement, and it still would be measurable, and it would give people options.
How do we, how do these teachers figure out who was in close contact and who wasn't? I mean, because once you have to go, aren't you contagious so many days before your positive test? I mean, how do they go back? I'm really.
So when we have a test, okay, and we have it confirmed, then you're just basically, depending, again, grade level, scenario, you're going to those areas where they're known times where the kid's in close contact. So if the kid sits at the same lunch table, right, you're going to those five other kids because they do it every single day, right? So it just takes time, right? So it's, the same process applies, you're just gonna be determining who's in mask or not.
So that wouldn't change what they're used to in terms of.
Well, it's a hell of a concept.
Yes.
If they know that they're gonna be in close contact, right? I mean, you gotta take the mother situation out of it, right? But if they know that they're gonna be a close contact and they have a mask on, then they don't have to worry about quarantine. There's, I mean, think of this building, right? I work with kids in Tech Head all the time, there's, there can be two kids in ten thousand square feet, right?
Right, obviously, that's a different story.
Other areas, it's, you know, you have, whatever, you get eighty kids, a hundred and forty sometimes. So it's a totally different thing, right? So I think it's, the, the point is understanding where their quote-unquote, you know, those situations where you can be.
But it wouldn't just be blanket, you're out.
Correct.
Does everybody understand the idea?
With the understanding that we revisit.
Oh, absolutely.
Why do we want a month?
I would say a month.
I was gonna say too, I, I think we should look at, I mean, because our numbers could go way down in a month.
Well, and.
Well, you, we saw that last year, you saw.
Yep.
You saw a community event, you saw it rise.
Yep, and we just had fair and shanty days and.
And we just, you know, we're not even a month into school, and we have stats. So I think, I think it would be, you know, I think it would give us the same sort of snapshot in time and see if we have saved kids.
Well, I mean, last year, you didn't have any, any cases until October. So you can't, you can't compare this year.
I'm not talking about last year at all. I don't want to talk about last year. Just like, and some of the other people here said, we don't want to talk about other school districts. I really don't want to talk about other school districts either. I want to figure out what works for us, what keeps our kids in school and keeps them safe, and ideally, the community safe, but. All right, well, I guess I would entertain a motion.
It's gonna be hard to.
Yeah. I don't think so, I don't think so.
I know, I mean, just express it, lay it out.
Addressing that.
It's basically a difference in quarantine.
Right.
That's the only change, because we're still, people are sick, still have to stay home.
That's the only change, because we're still, people sick still have to stay home. We're not changing our quarantine policy, except for the fact that if somebody is masked, has been masked
In close contact.
At any time that they have been in contact, they are no longer required to quarantine.
Yeah.
And if they're unmasked and in close contact, then they are required to quarantine.
Correct.
Yeah.
Got that?
Yep.
So we also, we all understand it, okay.
Did you get that?
Got that, Jason? And that we would, and that we would, we'll revisit the statistics
In a month.
In a month.
A month later.
At our, it would be
Because you've got a board meeting
At the October one?
So
Well, yeah.
At the, at the monthly board meeting of October. October monthly board meeting.
Not necessarily that you're going to be
Changing.
You're gonna
Look.
Look at.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
And can we have the school nurse do a dashboard, so parents can take a look at that and see what's, you know, how many, that they can access and see? Can we, can our school nurse do that?
Just sheer number district wide, positives, close contact. In close contact, she's doing it.
The feedback I heard from parents was they'd like a little bit more nuanced information, you know, so that they
Like classroom and things?
Yeah, so the
If that's not
Because there, I guess, there were some that were quarantined, where parents felt like they didn't really get enough information to be helpful, so if we could, I think more detail would be appreciated.
Grade level, I'm giving personal information.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Grade level.
Right, grade level and
Positive, close contact.
And this would be on our website, then?
Well, I think we could, you could have it there, but you could also push it out on a weekly basis to your parents.
Oh.
Yeah, I think people would like that.
Okay.
Okay, so now, getting back, we have sort of discussed the wording of a potential motion. But how are we going to, um, how are the parents gonna be informed, you know what I mean? There's gonna be a little difference here, so is that, I'm sure the nurse, nurse carries
We push it out, so I would push that out to all parents.
So it would go out saying, there has been a positive in your classroom, um, your child is now needing to quarantine if they were somebody that wasn't masked, and, and they would get the message of
Right.
um, there's a positive in your classroom, but your child was masked during any close contact, so therefore, unless symptoms start, they can stay in school, something like that. I mean, that has to, you know.
Yeah, parents are gonna get, either you were a, in a classroom with a positive, right, and you were deemed in close contact, or you were not, that's it. Right? That's the only two things that it could be, because, you know, if you're not
So we're just not gonna even count it as a close contact if they were masked?
Why wouldn't you?
Okay, I'm just trying to get terminology here. I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to understand it, because
Wait a minute, you just said close contact before.
Right.
You're, you're close contact and you have
A parent only is gonna know, my son or daughter was a close contact or not.
And we're not gonna call them on
They're just being informed that there's a positive in the class.
Right, okay.
And you're doing what you're doing.
So, if I'm understanding this correctly, this would only, really only affect the unmasked?
The
Right?
As far as
If you're
If they are in the close contact
Yes.
And they were not wearing a mask, then current process applies.
It says you got to quarantine, so it's really only going to affect the un, if you're in close contact and you have a mask, it's not gonna affect you.
Right, if you're unmasked
Only going to affect the unmasked, okay.
And any mask that develops symptoms, all the same screening then changes. They either has to be tested to rule in or out COVID, or whatever, or stay home, or, you know, the same decision tree.
I mean, I think it would be common sense for individuals that are gonna have kids in environments where they would be close contacts to educate, right?
Well, the individual that was talking to you.
Any of our teams, right?
Yeah.
If we want to continue playing in a season, makes sense, everybody, right?
When you're in the dugout together, wear a mask.
Eighteen minute ride, just for the love of God, do it, right?
Oh, on the bus.
On the bus, they're supposed to do.
It's a worse thing, you can't, right?
Right, but it also is after
They travel in a van, same thing.
Yes.
So you get eight kids in there, and two adults, right?
So continue it after, yeah.
Yeah, because I, I did get an email on that too, but it's not for, like, you know, up here, because it's not regarding the policy, it's just regarding quarantine.
Right.
Soft and chon out for a little bit.
It's, I mean, some of this is very similar to how, I mean, we don't have the resources that, like the NFL does, but that's what they're doing, right? It's, I mean, they don't publicize all that, but if there's a positive, right, you know, that's the process that they're going through.
Okay, so, taking that step further, they're on the bus, going, you know, they're on the bus, you know, somebody tests positive, but what about the practice that they were at the day before?
Well, again
It's outside.
I know, but
I, I, I It's outside.
That's what you can control.
Right.
I mean, do you quarant, do you quarantine because of that, or you say, it's outside, so
Outside.
That was my
And hopefully, when people are outside, they're not on top of each other.
Well, in some cases, you can't.
But in terms of, again, when you're talking about the buses That's a lot right now, so I hope we're following
It's also not, it's a cumulative thing, so, take football, for instance. I mean, a kid doesn't have same contact as same kid cumulatively for X amount, right?
Right, right, and that fifteen minutes, that, there's no tackle at last fifteen minutes.
No, I was talking more about on the sidelines, you know.
That's outside.
Outside, you're all fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and we haven't had any restrictions on that, and so we're not talking about changing
Nor does anybody
Right.
Does anybody really go down that route, because it's terribly difficult to manage.
They do worry about, um, the buses coming to school, right, that's required, okay.
Yeah, it's a federal law.
Well, it's hard to
Yeah, but it is a law. That's out of our control, so. All right, I guess, um, if everybody understands that, does anybody have any problems with that idea, or any further discussion? Then I will entertain a motion to continue optional masking with the change affecting quarantine. For those who have been masked, as a close contact, they will no longer have to be quarantined. All other policies, or I should say practices, will stay in place relating to sick people need to stay at home, testing, all of that kind of thing. Parents will be informed, all that doesn't have to be part of the motion, but it's the understanding of the motion.
With information sharing, parents.
Which is the same as it is now. So I don't think we have to have that.
As well, so.
Um, and
Can I just make your motion?
Yeah, and the quarantine would be for seven to ten days, or fourteen, unless they got a test.
It, it will be the same as our algorithm. We won't change our decision tree, I think that
They can
Okay.
On a negative test, return
After seven, okay.
None of that'll change.
I made that motion. Bart?
Yes, Dave.
Bart?
Yes.
Before you move in there, I allowed you for about two minutes before I got back in, right when you were discussing the motion.
Okay, let me repeat then what we're talking about, Dave. Our intent is to try and keep the kids in school and allow those who have been masking, um, that have had a close contact, to stay in school instead of having to go out on quarantine like we have in our policy now. So the quarantine would only affect the positive COVID students and the unmasked students that were close contacts. So we, but we also, um, in this decision, um, want to revisit it at our October, review the impact of this change at our October school board meeting.
And monthly thereafter.
Well, we can, I would think we'll want to do that.
I just wanna make sure we do, look at it.
Yeah, we can certainly, you know
Just take a look, how's it going?
All right, so did you make that motion?
I made that motion, yes.
All right, do you wanna, do you, do you have it down, Jason? Do you want to read back the motion?
So I have modified the quarantine policy to allow students that are masked to avoid quarantine in a close contact situation.
Yeah, I think that takes care of it.
That mentions the dashboard.
Okay, and then also that we will revisit, uh, maybe that could be a second motion, I think, so that makes it clear. So let's go with the first motion. We have a motion, do I have a second?
Oh, second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Dave, where are you on this?
I'm there, I am.
Okay. All right, motion carries. Um, I need a motion to review this, um, at our October meeting and hopefully thereafter.
So move.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'm a second.
Second, second by Jen. Um, any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Dave?
Here.
Opposed? I hear none, motion carries. I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, we are adjourned.